I guess everybody is here and we have two of our council members missing, so we have a quorum of three, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order and we'll do our pledge of allegiance and our implication by our city manager.
Blessings to the flag, the United States of America, and to the people who support its stance, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, allow your spirit to empower us to recognize the ways in which we are blessed and to build a community of learning that is characterized by creativity and spirit of service. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
We have a presentation by Mr. Garcia on presentation of a white for our city secretary's office.
Yes, Mayor and City Council, good afternoon. I am very pleased to announce that the State Department of State Health Services recognized our mission's office of the City Secretary Vital Statistics Department at the 61st Annual Texas Vital Statistics Annual Conference. This was held in Austin and this is awarding our office the state's five-star exemplary award and this is the city of Mission was the only one out of three awarded from the Rio Grande Valley. And I would like to see if I can have Ms. Anna Carrillo, who's our department head, recognize her in her department so she can bring the rest of her staff.
Mayor, Council, we're honored to receive this award. This is the highest award that we can receive in the Department of Auto Statistics from the state and like Mr. Garcia said, we were only, we were one of the three from the Rio Grande Valley, so I'm very proud of the hard work and dedication of Carmen Morales, who is one of our administrative assistants. She's our head deputy, deputy vital statistics and we've got Mary Cantu and we have Paula Vanda, who are deputies, so I'm very pleased of their hard work. Everything needs to be filed in a timely manner or you know, the state dox you on that, so we received one of the highest scores, so I'm very pleased of my staff and to receive this award on behalf of the city of Mission.
Thank you, Ms. Carrillo. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And then three, two, one.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much for your hard work.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Mr. Myers, the Chamber of Commerce will give us a presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Want to give you a brief event update. The chamber's primary focus continues to be on preparations for the annual mega winter Texan Fiesta, which is going to be held on February 12th through the 14th. On the 22nd, chamber staff partnered with Mustangville Chamber of Commerce to launch the grand opening of MEMS Elementary Schools Mini-Tropolis Program. Also wanted to update you that we're going to be launching a version two of our Go Mission program. It's going to include banners. Downtown Conway is soon going to be adorned with these banners encouraging local citizens and visitors to shop Mission first and inform them of the Go Mission card and the perks that it offers. In addition, we'll be providing the city with enough Go Mission bumper stickers to place on each city vehicle. They're also going to be handed out at the chamber office, chamber events, and included in relocation packets and visitor info requests. We're also going to be doing a redesigned website and have begun working on a mobile app for Go Mission as well. Also in the next couple of months, we're going to introduce a new Go Mission magazine. I've also included in your packet a copy of the chamber's new 2016 Community Guide and Business Directory and our 2016 Discover Mission Referral and Relocation Guides. These are annual publications that provide membership directory as well as detailed information on what to do, where to eat, where to stay, and where to shop while they're in Mission. Upcoming events on the 27th at 10:30 a.m., please join us for, as we welcome CCs to the new, or to the Mission Chamber family with the ribbon cutting ceremony. Also on Wednesday, January 27th at 5:30 p.m., we welcome our newest member, Couture Nails, with the ribbon cutting ceremony. On Thursday, January 28th at 5:30 to 7:30, we'll be hosting our monthly after-hours Business Mixer. It'll be sponsored by and held at Texas Regional Bank on Griffin Parkway. On Friday, January 29th at 8 a.m., we'll be hosting our monthly Coffee Connections event. This month's Coffee Connection is sponsored by Camper Investments. It'll be held at Jitters Coffee Bar on Conway. And lastly, the chamber staff will be on hand to assist with many of the Texas Citrus Fiesta and Sister City events that are going to be held this coming weekend. Please see your packets for additional information. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, George.
Department reports, you have them in your packet. If there's any questions, don't hesitate to ask them now. If not, we'd like to have a motion to approve the reports.
I move to approve.
Report it.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Citizens' participation, we have anybody from the audience who would like to address the council? State your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Vanessa Tejera and I'll refrain from stating my address if anybody knows that they can request a record of where I signed in. I'm coming to you all today and I already spoke to your city attorney about my time leak and you can speak to him afterwards regarding that. I don't feel the need to talk about that in public. The reason that I'm coming here is because my name's, like I said, Vanessa Tejera. I am the 15th Congressional District candidate. You all haven't heard about me because I entered the battle after the primaries. Now, one thing that concerned me in the last two weeks was that, it was brought to my attention that there was an elderly lady that's been coming to you all and she's complaining of a lot of really bad things happening to her for about two decades. For a long time, people have seemed to be dismissing her, labeled her crazy. I'm here to let you guys know that there's nothing, there's nothing written where it states that a person with a documented disability or a diagnosis is unable to be a legitimate complainant. And it's unfortunate that they keep bringing up a diagnosis that may or may not exist. But what's most important is the possibility does exist. We cannot just be leaders and say, oh, no, that cannot happen in our beautiful city. If the possibility does exist that people have... Is there a problem?
Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm being distracted.
You need to...
If the possib... No, it's okay. If the possibility exists that this could have happened, that a whole group of officials maybe came together to oppress somebody that's high risk for being oppressed and you know, people knew about it, realtors were involved, this lady owns 80 acres on Sherry Road. It's not, it's not, it's unreasonable to expect that she absolutely has no idea what she's talking about. Disability Rights is one of my biggest platforms because they're very, very often violated in the, in the United States. It is my opinion that here in the Rio Grande Valley, it happens even more frequently due to just impunity, just fear of, no fear of quant, no fear of consequence. So the reason that I'm here is just to let you know that she's on our radar, she's on my radar and I'm willing to help her should she not be allowed to come here anymore. It was brought to my attention that you all have a new city attorney and it was the other city attorney that was kind of in cahoots with councilmen to intimidate her into not coming forward anymore. And they think that that's wrong and probably may rise to other sorts of levels that are inappropriate. So I'm just letting you know that, that anybody else that comes forward like that, well, they have a voice now and that voice is me and I'm not going to be letting that happen to people and just stay quiet about it. I'll help them get to the resources that they need. Please don't turn people away and please have an absolutely good reason to deny somebody from speaking in public unless you all are not afraid to soil your names. Thank you.
Are you referring to Mrs. Billman?
I'd rather not out here right now, but if you look up my name, Vanessa Tejera, if you look me up on YouTube, you'll see her speaking at the county, but she had to go over there because she wasn't allowed here anymore. She was told she was going to get sued.
She did what, she was allowed here for the past, I mean...
My own city, my own city, excuse me, my own city tried to do the same thing to me.
Eighteen years and she was here.
Mr. Selena, please don't argue. I don't think you're supposed to be doing this.
Well, I'm just trying to be as fair as possible.
I don't think you're supposed to be doing this.
You can't come and criticize us for something that we have done wrong.
I have limited time.
Have a seat, have a seat before we do the same thing to you. Public hearing, 1.1A.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing. This is for rezoning of a tract of land containing 1.38 acres of land being part of or portion of Lot 24-7 West Edition, the Sherry Land subdivision. The current zoning is agricultural open interim and the request is to rezone it to C3 General Business District. The applicant is Sambro Investments, care of John David Santos. And this, if the council's inclined to adopt this rezoning, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. As you all may recall, this property is behind the, it's behind the Conway Heights, the Virgil Wilson Funeral Home. It's a property that was purchased by Mr. Santos and he is in the process of rezoning it and also subdividing it. On January 13th of this year, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider the rezoning request. The property is near the southeast corner of Conway Boulevard and East Griffin Parkway. There are no, there was no public opposition during the planning commission meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval of the C3 zone. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing, this matter is not...
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? If not, we'd like to recommend that we go ahead and accept the recommendation and adopt ordinance 4306.
So move, Mayor.
A motion and second to approve the rezoning and also our ordinance of 4306. So those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. I vote in, I'm voting in favor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item B?
Item 1.1B, Mayor and Council, is a public hearing. This is for rezoning of lots two and four, Tonner Subdivision, from R1 Single Family Residential to R3 Multi-Family Residential. The applicant is Felipe Rodriguez and of course, if the council's inclined to approve it, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. This property has come before the council several times and there's a history on there. So when we held our public hearing before the Planning Commission on January 13, 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission asked for public input and we note that there's, there's a, the property is located approximately a quarter mile south of Business Highway 83 along the east side of San Antonio Street. There was some, some public opposition during the Planning Commission meeting. The concerns voiced during the meeting were regarding insufficient drainage in the area and flooding. The board unanimously recommended denial of the R3 zone. Staff is recommending denial, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing, this matter is not before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Can you, can you come in and state your name and address?
I'm against. I don't know if there's someone here in favor. If you want to pick, tell me in favor first.
Ah, whatever. It's either way.
My name is Michael McClery and good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. This site is right next to three properties. I have lots six, eight, and 10 for my own personal house. That's my, my residence. And we're lower than the street, so when we first moved in, whenever it would rain, we would get flooded. But we took some measures against that and we were able to stop the water from coming directly across the front of our house and washing out our landscaping, but we still had more trouble. They actually added another apartment complex with maybe eight, 10 units, right in that open spot, which is to the north of that one. And when they added that, the last rain we had wound up flooding my neighbor's house on the other side more than is usual. They always get flooded in their open field because it's lower than the street.
So you, were you saying that you're against the proposal?
Yes, I'm against it because of the way the infrastructure is. I'm not against people building on their property. I'm not against the use of the property. What I'm against is not taking care of the infrastructure before you put in these, these extra units. There were another 24 units there.
So you're against the proposal?
Yes, I am against it.
Thank you very much.
For that reason. I have pictures on a disc if some...
No, no, that's okay. We, we have the information that we need. So you're against the building of these apartments?
Yes, at this time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else that would like to address the council? Basile?
Yo no hablo también el inglés.
Oh, también, you can speak in English.
Disculpenme. Este, yo soy hija del propietario y bueno pues nosotros estamos intentando mejorar el área. Este, hemos hecho el intento de vender la propiedad por innumerables veces y no hemos logrado venderla. Este, ahí los vecinos quitan las señales y ya va fácil diez anuncios que se ponen y no se ha logrado nada. Este, y bueno nosotros realmente sí lo adquirimos con el propósito de mejorar el área y nos gustaría mucho mejorarla. Yo sé que tienen un problema de, de, de drenaje, de pluvial, pero la intención es mejorar siempre, no es...
¿Usted te encontra o a favor?
A favor.
Okay. ¿Y su nombre es?
Diana Rodriguez.
¿Y su dirección?
Es mi, es 2806 Mission, perdón, Orange and Mission.
Andere, muchas gracias. Si a todos, a menos, ya entendemos.
Este, y bueno pues me gustaría mucho cooperar para mejorar el área. Yo sé que dándole vida a un terreno, este, a un lote, a una tierra, pues vamos a mejorar el lugar. Hay mejores ingresos para la ciudad y, y bueno pues la idea es no dañar a otros sino mejorar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to address the council? In favor or against this request? Okay, so the recommendation from Planning and Zoning is denial and the staff is denial, so we need a, we need a motion from the council?
I make a motion, Mayor, to accept what our board advised for denial.
We have a motion and a second. Go ahead and deny the, the proposed request. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
I vote in favor, I vote with them.
Yes, sir.
Item C?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 1.1C is a public hearing. This is for rezoning of lots three, four, five, and six of Expressway Business Park Phase 10, which is Light Industrial, and the request is to rezone this property from, to R3 Multi-Family Residential. The applicant is Terra Homes Corporation and this would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council's inclined to approve it. As you can see here on your monitors before you, where the property lies, it's at the southeast corner of Trinity and Brian, I mean, the Antalua's Bridge Highway and we do have a residential neighborhood to the east. So on January 13, 2016, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this rezoning request. The property is located at the southeast corner of Brian, Brian Road, Antalua's Highway and Trinity Road. There was some opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The concerns voiced were regarding increased traffic, noise, no privacy, and, and property devaluation. The board unanimously recommended denial of the R3 zone. Staff is recommending denial, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing, this matter is not before you.
Anybody in favor or against this request? Anybody in favor or against this request? We'd like to go ahead, recommend the denial with the Planning and Zoning, so we need a motion?
I make a motion, Mayor, to go ahead and follow the recommendation of our board and staff for denial.
We only have one here. You, Platas, who can make a second?
No, no, he's here.
I'll second that one.
I'm sorry, we, we thought that you were...
I'm here. I came in late, sorry.
I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item D?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1D is a public hearing for a conditional use permit. This is for a drive-through service window at La Curva Taquería at 2575 East Griffin Parkway, Suite 12, Lot 1, Tres Picos Phase 1 subdivision. The current zoning is C3 and the applicant is Iliacer Uresti and La, slash, La Curva Taquería LLC. If the council's inclined to approve it, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. As you can see here, the property is located at the old Mr. Fun site if, and this is what it looked like when it was cleaned up. I think we have, this is a current site plan showing what's ours building and where Jaime is pointing there on, on my right is where the taquería is proposing to have two drive-through service windows. As far as the, the property being loca, it's located approximately 700 feet west of Taylor Road on the north side of East Griffin Parkway. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting and the board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval for one year for a reevaluation and as our city manager is recommending approval as well. This matter is not before you.
What's an, ordinance number?
The ordinance number is 4307. A real quick question. So the person at the drive-through window is going to go around the building, is that correct?
The arrows here, they're going to travel north, I'm sorry. Can you, they're going to go north and the two windows will be on the, on that side of the wall right there where Jaime is pointing and then they'll go and wrap around and exit downward.
Behind the...
So they'll be, they'll be coming in from this south driveway, can we, right, right here and going to east, north, and then out.
Okay.
Where's his hat? What's on his nose?
This is the, Mr., the old Mr. Fun site next to Starlight?
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, I got it now.
Sure, Mayor.
Are you all recommending in favor?
Yes, sir, we are. Yes, sir, there's two windows and, and...
Any question from the council?
I'm a little concerned about the traffic going throughout the whole back of the...
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am. We, we looked at it, we, we talked to some of the planning commissioners about it and we decided that, that the best route would be to, as soon as they come in and then as Jaime is pointing on the arrow there, going east and going north. And there's plenty of room on, to, to that other juncture to my, to the furthest eastern point. The windows would be, one window, do we have a copy of the window layout? There's, there's one right here where they place the order and another where they pick it up. So it wouldn't intervene with like, there's some, we have some pictures too. You have a picture of it there, Jaime?
Danny, there's only one entrance from 495, is there going to be enough?
Movement?
For all the, for that, all the commercial building there?
Yes, sir. We, the traffic engineer that prepared this site plan, you know, it's all, the Harmony Lane and the way it's set up at this point, it's, it's efficient to move the traffic from the way it's set up.
Because they're going to be building apartments in the back, right?
Yes, and the apartments will have their own parking in, in the back.
But it's going to be the same entrance?
Correct. Yes, sir. And we'll be looking at cross-axis easements to the west and to the east as well to move traffic as well.
I know that we're not, that speed bumps aren't exactly the answer to most issues.
Yes, ma'am.
But I'm wondering if may, because there's a, there's a, it's a, I'm not sure how long it is, but there's 27 parking spaces.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
And then, and total, there's over 50, there's 51 spaces.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm just concerned about the person that's using that drive-through, you know, turns a corner and then, you know, that's a long way to speed up.
Yes, ma'am. And one of the things that we ironed out with the owner of the plaza is that on the north side, all the employees will be parking in the, on the north side. So the front, south side parking will be just for people doing business at the plaza.
Mr. Tejera, what we can request, along those 27 parking spaces?
Yes, sir.
Maybe a couple of those, you know, this is a private parking lot.
Parking lot.
So we can very easily, as a developer, to put two speed humps?
Sure.
Along that stretch because what Ms. Garcia's saying, it's, it's a long stretch.
Absolutely.
So there's a possibility of a speed...
Yes, sir.
...increasing, right? So we can obviously talk to the developer and we can make that as part of the development plan.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we can do that now.
I will make that in form of a motion to include two speed bumps.
I'll second her motion.
We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve, um, a conditional use permit for La Curva Taquería and also adopt ordinance 4307. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item E?
Thank you, Mayor. Public, item 1.1E is a public hearing for a conditional use permit. This is for the sale and onsite consumption of beer and wine at Yalla Habibi Mediterranean and Bistro located at 1522 East Expressway 83, Suite 114, Lot 4, Stewart Plaza subdivision. The zoning is C3 and the applicant is Carlos A. Ortiz and this would require the adoption of an ordinance if the council's inclined to approve it. On January 13th, we, we did have a public hearing before the Planning Commission to consider this CUP. The property is located at the southwest corner of Stewart Road and the Expressway. There was no public opposition during the P&amp;Z meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval as well and the hours of operation will be only until midnight. Primary sales will be food. So this is a public hearing, this matter is not before you.
We would like to add, Mayor, that this is also subject to selling only till midnight. I know the operation's only till midnight, but if in any case, the business decides to start opening till 1 o'clock or 2 o'clock, the actual sale of alcohol is only till midnight. So that's the recommendation from city manager.
I move for approval, this presented.
Second.
Hey, motion and second to go ahead and approve the conditional use permit and also adopt ordinance 4308. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
We also have item 2.1 is the disposition of minutes for the city council meeting that we had on January the 11th of 2016. Do need a motion to approve the minutes.
I move for approval, Mayor.
Second.
A motion and second to approve the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. We also have to acknowledge the minutes for the Parks and Recreation Board on December the 9th of 2015, Planning and Zoning Commission on December the 16th, Sherry Golf Advisory Board on November the 10th, Mission Historical Museum on December the 15th, Citizens Advisory Committee on December the 8th, Civil Service Commission on December the 10th, Mission Boys and Girls Club on December the 10th, Supreme Memorial Library on December the 15th, MADC Special Meeting December the, the 1st, Mission Redevelopment Authority on December the 10th, and the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone on December the 10th of 2015.
I move to approve, acknowledge receipt of one minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the, the acknowledgement of the minute, the minutes that we had on, on those dates. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries. We also go into item 4.1 on the approval and authorization of a resolution approving the amendments of a plat of Los Jardines de Cimarrón.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. As the mayor just stated, this would be a resolution approving the amendment of, of a plat at Los Jardines de Cimarrón subdivision for lots 44 and 45, relocating and dedicating a utility easement... for lots 44 and 45 relocating and dedicating a utility easement as shown on the amended plat attached. The property is located at, on the northeast corner of Red River and Sabinal. A request was submitted to, to build a residence over lots 44 and 45, Los Jardines de Cimarron. However, there is a recorded electrical utility easement between lots 44 and 45 that must be relocated to, in order to allow the construction over the lot lines. The property owner has obtained consent from the utility holder to relocate the utilities. If approved, the recorded electrical utility easement between lots 44 and 45 will be relocated to run along the side in front of Lot 44, Los Jardines de Cimarron subdivision. Staff is recommending approval of this plat amendment. This matter is now before you.
We do have a recommendation to approve those, Resolution 1427. We do need a motion to approve.
I move for approval, Mayor. Second.
Yeah, motion and second to approve Resolution 1427. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
4.2?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 4.2 is a request for a variance by KEM Texas LTD to install a new billboard at 1401 North Conway Avenue, being lots 7, 8, 9, and 10, Block 230, Mission original townsite. An application for a permit was submitted by the applicant on December 3rd of 2015 to install 40-foot-high double-sided billboard at the above location. The size of the billboard is 10 and 1/2 by 37 or 38 feet. The permit was received and reviewed, I'm sorry, and denied based on the following three sections of the sign code, that this section of Conway is not identified as a secondary arterial corridor at this time, two, that the proposed square footage of the faces of the billboard exceed 242 square feet maximum permitted on a secondary arterial, they're proposing 378, and the billboard is within 1,000 feet of a Mission Business Ground Pole sign. KEM Texas LTD is appealing the decision made by staff and requesting a variance to the three sections of the sign code. It is noted that there are three billboards on Conway Avenue. From, one of them is located south of First Street on the east side of Conway, just south of our park and the flower shop there. Another one is located at the northwest corner of 17th and Conway, and the other is located at the southwest corner area of Griffin Parkway and Conway Avenue. That's where the church and where the, the storage units are at. So if the variance is approved, this billboard could serve as a midpoint between the one located south of First and the one located at the northwest corner of Griffin Parkway and, and Griffin Parkway and Conway. So staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This matter is now before you.
We do need a motion to approve. Move to approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion and a second to approve the, the request for a variance by Kemp of Texas LTD. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What the nombre?
I'm a, I'm a...
No soygo?
I'm a no, Mayor.
You're a no, okay.
Yes, sir.
No is a no, I'm a yes. Plata? Yes. And yes, you made the motion. Motion carries. This is gonna be a good addition to Conway and I hope we learn by using this billboard so we can get more. The more we have, the more the city of Mission is going to bright.
Sure.
Before, we used to only allow one every mile because they were so, so far away. This time, we're gonna miss, get Mission to light and we're gonna like it. People are gonna be able to advertise on these kind of billboards and it's just gonna be a lot different than before. Item 4.3?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Item 4.3 is an, is an approval of a resolution accepting the dedication of a 30-foot road and 10-foot road easements to the north and south side of the road from Snowbird Estate subdivision known as West Can Lane. The subdivision is located on the east, the southeast corner of Benson Palm Drive and West Can Lane. 100% of the landowners of Snowbird Estate subdivision have submitted a petition to the city of Mission requesting that this 30-foot road, which is private, and the 10-foot road easements to the north and south of the road be dedicated to the city for public use. The city of Mission annexed this subdivision on January 12th, 2009 via ordinance number 3433. Pursuant to the service plan for the area's annex, the following services are being provided since the property was annexed: police protection, fire protection, code enforcement, parks and recreation, solid waste collection, the potable water, wastewater, street and road maintenance, street lighting, also maintenance of public facilities, and number 11 capital improvements within the two and a half years of the effective date of the annexation. Staff is recommendation, staff is recommending approval of this resolution to accept this road right away and as is our city manager. This matter is now before you.
Any questions from the council on this Resolution 1428?
I move for approval.
Second. Yeah, motion and second to approve Resolution 1428. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4.4?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This, this item is authorization to solicit bids for the demolition of a building and content removal. Staff is seeking authorization to solicit bids for the demolition of a downtown building located at 508 North Conway Avenue. Services will include the removal of all brush, debris, junk, rubbish, trash, and weeds at said location. As far as the budget, it's from the general fund and what's budgeted at this time, well, the budget is $22,000 and the estimated cost is $60,000. Staff, staff recommends approval of going, of soliciting bids for this demolition. This matter is now before you.
What's the address?
508 North Conway.
50 what?
508 North Conway.
508 North Conway.
Yes, sir.
Move for approval, Mayor?
Second. We have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the authorization of soliciting for bids. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
4.5? Ms. Carrillo?
Yes, Mayor, Council. Item 4.5 would be approval of a resolution in support of the proposed Taylor Senior Village. Brownstone Affordable Housing LTD has proposed to develop 126 units or less for senior affordable rental housing located within the city of Mission to be called Taylor Senior Village. Brownstone Affordable Housing has submitted an application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for 2016 competitive 9% housing tax credit. The attached resolution would support the proposed development. This item's now before you.
Mayor, on this particular agenda item, before we consider further discussion on it, I just wanna make a comment that it's 126 units, it's multifamily. This is a tax credit development and I know it's just a resolution, but I think it's very important that, that you allow us to have a public hearing. Like to see if staff can send notification to the surrounding community. Most of your surrounding area is large lot, single family or just single family. The only multifamily in that area is actually just north of 495 and, you know, I think it's important that, that we take a look at what the surrounding neighborhood is, is thinking of and how they look at this project.
I agree with you, so go ahead and we'll go ahead and table this item.
Believe, no action would be the...
No action would be better.
Would be the appropriate thing, is that correct?
That's correct, yes, Mr. Mayor.
No action on item 4.5 and, and we'll go ahead and bring it back at a later date after you send out the publication on what these people wanna do there.
That's correct. That way, when we come back with the, with the discussion on a new resolution, we can go ahead and give the council a count or a voice as to what the residents indicated regarding this project.
Okay.
What was the purpose of the resolution?
The resolution is actually needed for the application for, up in Austin, to be able to say that the council is in favor of this type of project and...
Without the, without the resolution, they're gonna have to act on it.
Okay, and that's prior to rezoning?
Correct. That's so they can apply and submit the application, but it's kinda difficult for us, it's kinda premature to do, to do something like this when we don't have a public hearing on it. So even though it's not yet a rezoning issue, I think it's important that we get some public hearing and that way we can give you all some information on how they voice their opinion on that.
I agree. Totally.
Mayor, is there an opportunity for the manager to at least be acknowledged on this item or if it's been passed over, is it not appropriate to address council?
He wants to address the...
Developer, the applicant.
Okay, he wants to address the council. It's not a public hearing, sir, but you're welcome to step up and make some comments.
I, thank you very much. My name is Jed Brown, Brownstone Affordable Housing and Brownstone Construction. I am the, with the company that is, or was intending to present this item this evening. I'm here this evening with Lisa Helly, who helped us find this location along with our lead superintendent in the area, Alfonso Dabila, and we, there is a timing issue here. In order for this application to, to be submitted in full, the resolution must be received before the end of, of next month of February. If not, we are not entitled to the points that are necessary for this to be a winning application. It is a winning application. It's the highest scoring development in Region 11. So if there's any action that we need to take as the developer, we'd love to come and participate in any, any dialogue with the city or the area.
I think we can set up a meeting, a public meeting pretty, pretty quick on that, Mr. Tejina, and Jaime Acevedo will help me out on that. And if needs so be, Mayor, I can, we can do a special meeting to address just this particular agenda item based on the public hearing and comments that we received from the general area there.
But you need to, to send out your...
The notices, correct.
Tomorrow.
Yes, absolutely. What's the date, sir? Can you give me the exact date when your application is due?
We must, we must receive a resolution, resolution of support before, I believe it's March 1st, but by the end of February in order to submit it as part of the, the application.
Well, I think if we start issuing the notices tomorrow, I think we can get that public hearing set up and we can do a special meeting for the council just to hear this agenda item to see, to discuss this resolution at that moment.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you. Can you leave your name and information with Ms. Idal Elmahier, my deputy city manager, please?
Okay, and it's, it's part of the packet we already submitted also.
And just to be clear, that resolution of support is specific to that location?
Yes, it is. It is specific to that location and only that location.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Our next item is 4.6?
Yes, Mayor, Council. Item 4.6 would be approval of Resolution 4309 calling a general election in Mission, Texas, providing for the election of council members for places 2 and 4, providing for polling places and other matters related to said election. This would be Saturday, May the 7th is Election Day. Early voting would be conducted at City Hall and at the Boys and Girls Club Gym at Banworth Park. The hours would be, it would be Monday through Tuesday, closed on, on Sunday, from 7:00 to 7:00 on Monday, the first day, and Tuesday, the last day, and 8:00 to 6:00 all of the other days except for Saturday, 8:00 to 5:00. Election Day polling locations would be held at the regular locations, Mission High School, Gastro Elementary, Pearson Elementary, Bryan Elementary, and Mission Boys and Girls Club Gym at Banworth Park, and of course, this would be from 7:00 to 7:00. So I'm requesting approval of ordinance 4309 calling the election.
We need a motion to approve ordinance 1429.
I move for approval. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 4.7, Anna?
Yes, Mayor, Council. Item 4.7 is the approval of the interlocal agreement between the city of Mission and Sherri Land Independent School District. This is to conjoint, conduct joint elections in accordance with Texas Education Code, Section 11.0581. Basically, what this agreement is, Mayor and Council, is just for us to share common polling locations as per this House Bill 1 that was approved several years ago.
We need a motion to approve the interlocal agreement?
Move for approval. Second.
Yeah, motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
4.8?
Good afternoon, Mayor. City Council. Item 4.8, authorization to solicit for bids for hydraulic system and minor mobile truck repair service. Service seeking authorization to solicit bids for hydraulic system and minor mobile truck repair services for the sanitation department fleet for the fiscal year of 2015, 2016. This item's now before you.
I move for approval. Second.
And a motion and second to approve to solicit for bids. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. You didn't vote?
Yes.
Did you? I didn't hear you. Okay, item 4.8, 4.9?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 4.9 is the approval of the new sanitation rates to be charged to the city of Mission by Allied Waste Services for all commercial accounts. The current contract provisions between the city and Allied Waste Services stipulate that Allied Waste is allowed to increase or decrease the rates. They charge the city for commercial trash collections on a yearly basis based on the increase, increase or decrease in the consumer price index. For the previous 12 months, the city is in receipt of correspondence from Allied Waste where they're providing notice that the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, for 2016, based on the preceding 12 months, the CPI decreased by an adjustment of minus 2.331%, which is well under the contract CPI maximum of 4%. Based on the information provided by Allied Waste and reviewed by staff, the recommendation is to approve the new rates.
Yeah, we need a motion to approve the new sanitation rates by BFI.
I move for approval. Second.
Yeah, motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Budget amendment, but Mr. Villa?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Agenda item 4.10 is for the approval of the attached budget amendments. On page 262, we have a general fund request to reclassify budget for the purchase and replacement of four power supply outlets needed to back up and maintain city network by IT department. On page 263, we have a utility fund request to amend appropriations by $18,775,987 to set up the budget for the bond proceeds placed in escrow for the construction of the wastewater plant expansion project. On the next six pages, 264 through 269, we have designated purpose fund requests to amend revenues and appropriations totaling $555,578, consisting of allocating budgets for the 2016 STEP comprehensive grant from the Texas Department of Transportation, the 2014 Operation Stone Guardian Grant, and the local border security program 2016 grant, all for the Mission Police Department. And on page 270, we have a Mission Economic Development request to amend appropriations by $24,534 to allocate funds for the salary increase for the CEO and MADC approved by the MDC Board in December 2015. This item is now before you.
Okay, I didn't understand one bit. You need to go just slower and go by, what are your budget amendments from the general fund?
The general fund is the reclassification. It's moving money in order to reclassify the budget to purchase four power, power supply outlets for the IT department.
It's how much?
It's for a reclassification of $3,580.
What was that?
$3,580. $580, Mayor. This is for some batteries for the IT department. The funds are there, we're just reclassifying.
Okay, what else do you have on general fund?
That's the only general fund reclassification.
The utility fund?
The utility fund is an amendment for $18,775,987.
What's, what's your amendment on this one?
This one is to set up the budget for the bond proceeds from the Texas Water Development Board that we received for the construction of the wastewater plant expansion project.
How much is the amendment?
$18,775,987.
That's what you're gonna get or what?
We're getting a portion of that from the Texas Water Development Board and from agua.
So this is completely from the, just for the water?
Yes, the total.
For the expansion of the 4.5 MDT's that we're doing in bond proceeds.
Okay, so you're getting, you're saying that you're getting 18 million into the fund?
Mm-hmm, and we're, we're... Mm-hmm, and we're spreading it out over the expense accounts that we're gonna use.
You're spreading it down to the amounts that you're, what are you asking from us today?
To approve the amendment, to increase those expense accounts for that money that we received.
To approve the amendment, which is 18 million?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, let's go to the next one.
The next one is three, it's three different grants that we're getting, and this is from the designated fund, the Designated Purpose Fund. It's three different grants that we're getting from the Police Department, and the total amount for the three different grants is the $555,578. And it's mostly for overtime and benefits, mostly for overtime and benefits for the Police Department.
I still don't understand.
And these grants, ma'am, are coming from Stone Garden, Texas Department of Transportation.
And the Local Border Security Program.
Okay.
Okay, so what are you amending?
We're amending the revenues that we're receiving them.
Where are you getting these revenues from?
From the agencies that are giving the grants.
Okay, but you need to tell us that. I mean, you're getting 555 from the state?
Yes.
Okay, what are they for? You need to tell us what they're for.
They're for three different grants, for the 20, for the 2016 Step Comprehensive Grant, for the 2014 Operation Stone Garden Grant, and for the Local Border Security Program 2016 Grant.
Okay, the first one is for what?
The 2016 Step Comprehensive Grant.
Ayudalo, por favor.
Yes, sir. The first grant, sir, is from Tech Dot. That's the grant for overtime to work speed enforcement, DWI, and seatbelt enforcement.
What's wrong about knowing that?
Nothing.
Nothing wrong with that?
Right.
Okay.
The second grant actually comes from the Department of Homeland Security to the county, the sheriff, and the sheriff gave us $300,000. Of those 300,000, 150,000 are to buy equipment, and 150,000 is to work overtime along the U.S.-Mexican border and throughout the country.
It's so easy for you to tell us, and what else?
And the last one is the Portstar Grant. That's from the governor's office, that we're getting that through the DPS Office to work , I mean, Homeland Security along the U.S.-Mexican border.
How much is the governor sending you?
178,000.
54,000?
178,000.
178,000.
178,000.
178,000, yeah.
Okay, so...
So 178,000 from the state, $300,000 from Operation Stone Garden through the sheriff, and then the first one is 77,578 from Tech Dot.
Okay. That's through...
And that's basically to set up the accounts, so we can spend the money.
Okay, that is from, which department is that, MDC?
No, that's the Designated Purpose Fund.
Designated Purpose Fund, and then you have the MDC?
And then we have the MDC, which is the last one.
So that's taken care of, the Designated Purpose Account. Okay, how about MDC?
The MDC one is...
Who can help us here on MDC?
Randy, can you step up, please?
Yes, Mayor, this budget amendment is, we're increasing the budget for 24,354.
How much?
24,354. And this is to, the MDC approved an increase for the CEO, for MDC approved on December the 1st, 2015.
Oh, okay.
And this is the adjustment for that, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is that the only one we have?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion?
I move for approval, Mayor.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second, to approve all the budget amendments. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 411, authorization to execute first one-year renewal option.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Come before you, seeking authorization to execute first one-year renewal option for meter connect supplies with HD Supply Water Works. The contract terms were for one year with two one-year renewal options based on 3% increase in price. Staff seeking authorization to extend contract for the first one-year renewal option with HD Supply Water Works. Recommendation is based solely on estimated quantities, and orders will be placed on a necessary basis throughout the one-year term. Against staff, recommendation is extend contract for the first year renewal option with HD Supply Water Works. Total estimated cost for one, the one-year term is $30,000.
So authorization to execute first one-year renewal option.
I move for approval.
On the water meters, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Second. Maintenance place.
So you're actually telling us about spending how much money?
$30,000.
$30,000.
Yes.
Need a motion to approve the execution of the first one-year renewal option?
No, I made a motion.
So moved, Mayor. I moved, I made that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 412?
Yes, sir. Mayor, City Council members, this next agenda item, 412, is the authorization to execute first one-year renewal option for hot mix asphalt material with Kappa, Upper Valley Materials. Again, the contract terms were for one year with two one-year renewal options based on 3% increase in price. Staff seeking authorization to extend contract for the first one-year renewal option at a lower cost per ton, from $56 per ton to $53 per ton, 5.36% decrease with Kappa, Upper Valley Materials. Recommendation again is solely on estimated quantities, and orders will be placed on a necessary basis throughout the one-year term. The cost for this project is approximately 170,000 dollars, is for the whole one-year term for this contract. Against staff, recommendation is extend contract for the first one-year renewal option with Kappa, Upper Valley Materials.
You made a motion to approve the...
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. 413, Mr. Goria?
Mayor and Council, 413 is to award bid for Housing Assistance Program, Phase 15-1 for 944 Chester Street. On November 23rd, we went out for bids. We brought, we brought back, or we received four bid responses for reconstruction and a rehab project, okay? At this time, we'd like to award the rehabilitation project, which is for street, for the address 944 Chester Street, in the amount of $11,600. This, we'd like to award it to OCL Enterprises. They've met all the terms and conditions, and this has also been approved by the CAC Committee.
I move for approval. Second.
Motion in second to approve. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Item 4.14 is to reject and resolicit bids for the Housing Assistance Program Phase 15-1 for 915 West First Street. This was the other address that was bid out on the project that I just described, and this particular bid is, we're unable to bid it because it came in too high. So we'd like to reject and rebid. The address is 915 West First Street, and staff and CAC are also recommending for us to reject and rebid.
Are we doing them, we're going higher on the 45, on the 55?
That would be the next, that would be the next agenda item, sir.
That's correct, sir.
So we need a motion to reject?
So move.
Second.
Motion in second to reject. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Sir, item 4.15, Mayor and Council, is to amend the Housing Assistance Program guidelines that the City of Mission has in place. CAC met recently on January the 19th and approved staff's recommendation to amend the guidelines as follows. We are to remove the maximum amount allowed for reconstruction of a home and to continue to use no more than 15% of staff's cost estimate to select the lowest responsible bidder. This change is necessary to prevent the rebidding of projects and to attract more credible contractors. Change number two, this change will not apply to the current rehabilitation program, however, a change is recommended to the minor repair program for manufactured homes, this is for mobile home, for manufactured homeowners to increase the maximum amount allowed from 3,500 to 25,000, not to exceed 50% of the value of the home, and continue to use no more than 15% of the staff's cost estimate to select the lowest responsible bidder. The increase would allow for repairs necessary to address the health and safety of mobile homeowners as well. What this does is this allows us to receive or to get more competitive bids. It allows for more quality contractors to come in, so that we're, you know, building quality projects. It allows us to be more timely on our projects, because we avoid having to reject and rebid when the bids come in at over our staff estimates. So this is definitely necessary, and we're recommending the approval to amend the Housing Assistance Program guidelines as outlined.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the amendments?
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion in second to approve the amendments. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Item 16?
Mr. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Item 4.16 is to the request authorization to purchase safety boots for the Safety Boot Reimbursement Program from CINTAS via state-approved U.S. Communities Contract Number 409271485. The City of Mission is continuing its safety boot employee payroll deduction program, where the city will purchase safety boots and then distribute the safety boots to eligible employees. The eligible employees will reimburse the city the full amount of the boots through a payroll deduction program not to exceed 10 pay periods. Staff recommends authorization for the purchase.
We need a motion to approve it?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries. 417?
Yes, thank you. Item 4.17 is the authorization to solicit bids for pest control services. I come before you, seeking authorization to solicit bids for pest control services, which will include labor, material, and equipment required for preventative pest control services in City of Mission buildings. This bid is being requested to secure fair and reasonable pricing. Staff recommends solicitation.
We need a motion to authorize to solicit bids for pest control?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against, motion carries. 417?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mission EDC is asking for the authorization of the issuance of industrial revenue bonds to finance and refinance a manufacturing project for Ameritech Pipe and Products LLC and Concrete Real Estate Investments LLC or related entities. Lee McCormick is here. He's our financial advisor and can answer any questions regarding this project.
What's the resolution?
1429.
1429.
Move to approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
419?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I come before you to present item 4.19, change order number one for casting placement holes at Model 2 project. Staff is seeking authorization for change order number one to introduce new items due to construction conflicts of encounter between the storm drain system and existing gravity flow sewer line. A new item for conflict manhole is being introduced to address these conflicts. The sewer line cannot be relocated due to the presence of a water line already located outside the pavement, and installing the sewer line too close will not meet the utility separation requirement. In addition, obtaining an easement outside the right-of-way would cause a substantial delay to construction activities. This change order also increases contract work days by 62 working days. The proposed conflict manholes are to be cast in place, which require additional time to construct, including concrete curing time needed for each pour. The total amount of the change order is 188,161 dollars with 73 cents, which is 3% of the original contract amount. Change order is less than 25% cap allowed by the Texas Local Government Code. Staff recommendation, approval of change order number one.
Okay, what is your change order?
It's for casting placement holes due to our sewer line has been in conflict.
How much is the change order for?
188,161 with 73 cents.
188,161.
188,000, Mayor. 188,161.
But this one, where you need to move your lines?
Yes, sir.
So how much is, are we paying?
The 188.
Our general fund?
We have, we have, from the utility fund, we're moving that money.
But the state is paying how much?
This item is not reimbursable due to the AFA states, and the local government is full responsible for all utility relocation.
I know, but how much is the state paying for?
Nothing.
No, I know they're paying some.
On our project, on the whole project.
On the project?
99% of the project. We're getting reimbursed only 1%. I'm sorry, we're paying 1% only.
No, you don't get it, you don't get it.
Mr. Ayarra, can you let us know what the 99% is? The City of Mission is only paying 1% of this...
No, but how much is the whole project for, Mr. Ayarra?
5.7 million.
No, 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 no. You know, I want to hear the real thing. How much are we, how much is the change order for?
The total change order combined, the conflict manholes and other items that we're doing, is 341,000.
341,000?
341. The state is participating in 153,000 out of that.
Which is the federal monies?
Right, which is federal monies, which the city will pay maybe 2,000, 1,500 out of that, 99% of that.
And the 188, we're taking it, it's ours?
That is correct, because it's, I mean, the Tech Dot went up to the federal highway, and they said they could not reimburse the city for this type of work.
Okay, so that's what I was trying to get to you, that you need to know that the whole thing was not 188. It's for everybody to know here, it was 300 and...
And 41,000.
41,000. That's what you need to know, and tell us, not 188, and not get, I mean, that is not the right thing. You know, I see everything, and I need to know what the federal government is paying, how much we're paying, and how much it would cost us if we had to move the lines, would cost us a lot of money. I mean, I'm talking about millions of dollars to buy easements and everything.
That's correct.
You know, and I mean, and this is what I want you guys to know. I mean, the real thing, and how much money we're saving the city. 188,000 is nothing compared to all the money that we would, would cost us if we had to move them ourselves.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
So that's what I really wanted to know from the engineer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, what else? Where am I at?
Approve for change order number one?
You're...
Move for approval, Mayor. Move for approval. Second.
We hadn't voted on it?
No, sir.
No.
They have motion in second to approve the change order number one. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Okay, Mr. Lopez?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Hopefully, mine's a little easier.
He's here.
I'm coming for you to authorize, declare surplus, and donate SCBA harnesses to sister cities. City of Mission Fire Department is requesting authorization to declare surplus, a total of 14 2.2 SCBA harnesses, for permitting to them to sister cities. These harnesses can be of valuable assistance to our firefighters, counterparts in our respective sister cities that do not have any form of protection to enter smoke-filled environments.
Move to approve.
Second.